Your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at m&amp;mostaffing.net or give us a call today at (931) 347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet, TV, and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit pesenergize.com or call us today.
The Natural Gas Department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
All right. Hello, good evening. It is June the 27th. It's 5:00 PM. We are in the central office boardroom. This is a special call board meeting tonight on this Tuesday night as we look at some things to end up our fiscal year. Roll call, Mr. McAllister.
Here.
Mrs. McLeod.
Here.
Mrs. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Sumners.
Here.
Mr. Brewer.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
And I am here. Thank you all. If you could, we'll rise for a moment of silence followed by the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Bow our heads. Father, you have graced us with another day. Your will be done. We love you, we praise you, we thank you. Amen.
Blessed are you. To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First under new business tonight is the GMP addendum. That is the Guaranteed Maximum Price set by Brently Construction for our Giles County High School project. This will pinpoint them as our construction manager at risk. That addendum was changed to match the new funds, and Dr. Beer will speak further on that.
The Guaranteed Maximum Price is just what it sounds like. The Guaranteed Maximum Price in the project at Giles County High currently, and I can increase that where that's a little more visible, the Guaranteed Maximum Price for Giles County High School is $11,086,502.50. What we would have to do is approve, because this is a binding contract with Brently, it does tell us that that's the most that we would pay unless there's a change order. They are here tonight if there are questions, but if there are change orders or something of that nature pops up, we would have to consider those. It took a while to get this because as we talked earlier, there were 46 just electrical requests for information. So that did take a little while to get all of this put together, but now that we have this, we can move forward with making sure that if you all approve this, we move forward, and then we would be looking at our budget amendment to make sure that this project is taken care of.
This was emailed earlier in the day, and again, as we stated last week, this, all this information was forthcoming. Domestic water pipes were added in last minute yesterday and achieved over the weekend as well, starting last Wednesday or Thursday, I believe it was, to get us to this new and final GMP. Page five on here gives you more of that breakdown, which is attachment A, and this is the denim, or the contract we've actually seen before and some of the breakdowns with the changes with adding.
Wold has proofed this and given their seal of approval on it.
Do you entertain a motion to approve this GMP addendum?
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
And most time it's supposed to be signed and done before they start construction? Or how do y'all operate like it running?
Well, we had an original contract signed, you know, to do a GMP, to amend the guaranteed max. And just like Knox and them pointed out, the scope was still being developed, and it was trying to get the work done by school starting. And the items, we were at 10-2-5, and the only items that have changed since that 10-2-5, and the 10-2-5 was before we started construction, only thing that has changed has been items we've gone over altogether, which is the adding of those electrical scope, which is those 46 RFIs that were not clarified till after the start of work from the engineers and architects, and then the domestic water add. When they got in there and they started removing all the insulation off some of the pipes, they were just very, very terribly deteriorated. And the thought was, is there's a contingency for this project of 135,000, and did you want to eat every bit of your contingency on day one, or would you rather adjust the guaranteed max and sell the contingency going forward? We added, when we added the domestic water, another few grand to that contingency, so you'll see the contingency is 185.
Maybe even to back up on Mr. Sumner's question, yes, you do need a GMP in place for a binding contract that then puts that construction manager as a construction manager at risk and also sets us when it comes to audit and whatnot up to begin the work. With the timeliness of the project, with the scope of work of the project, and also with goods coming in sooner than later and the ability to do the project, yes, it's true we did get work done before the GMP was set, but also at a point where we were working off drawings that were not complete in the same scope. Yes?
Also, too, if it gives y'all any just understanding, the 10-2-5, where we were before those changes, that's the work that's currently being undertaken right now. All the stuff that were added after that 10-2-5 are stuff that will take place in the future. I mean, it's still part of the same contract, but like the windows that you're seeing go in, I mean, because that's what most people see as they go by, all that, that number didn't change from the original.
Beth, you're here with finance if you need to speak or have any input.
Just trying to make sure I understand. Finance kind of came in on the back end of this, and the invoice that I've received, which has been turned back in, was 10.467 some odd. That's different than a 10.2. I'm just curious, the difference on that, and was the board made aware of that?
Yes, ma'am. So we were at 10-2-5 was right after the bidding process went through. And then we had those, like he alluded to, 46 RFIs that were for electrical that took a while for the engineers and stuff to go through and get answers to, and that's what took the GMP to the 10.4, I think it was 467, if it rings right. And that's what you saw in that pay request. Since then, they, because of deteriorated pipes and talks with both Vicki and Knox and Wold, the engineers, they thought it would be best to add domestic water back into this project, and because obviously that's a big system that if you're fixing what you're fixing, you don't want to put new ceilings back and everything else and have leaky pipes above your new ceilings, that that's the difference in the 10.4 that you saw. That's the only change is adding the domestic water. So what it is currently.
My only concern is I want to make sure whatever document we have in finance is what's been approved by this body and making sure we have the funding allocated for it, so.
I think there's been some confusion, and if I can sort of clarify, maybe this will help. Construction management at risk is a little different animal than your, just a hard dollar number. It's real close to a cost plus not to exceed. That's what most of y'all have, the terms of art that everybody deals with. The way this one was, and the way we were instructed to do it, was once we got to, we made request for proposal, our request for proposal basically was prior to any budgeting at all, it was for a fee, and that included pre-construction services and the fee for us doing work. And the beauty or the simplicity of construction management at risk, that's at the point in time you put your budget together. We put our budget together, we contacted subs, we bid it out to the public so that we would have enough coverage for bidding, and we did exactly that. Once those subs were picked and agreed upon, we, they walked through the buildings, they did that, well, numerous times before, before the bid and then after the bid, there were a lot of questions that came up, primarily, I think it was like 48?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, and of questions that had to do with this needs to be done, and this needs to be added. What are the questions? Architect added that, and that's how you got the first piece of it. Then as we got into the building, as Brian said, there was a lot of water damage or pipes that need to be included, and that, when we talked to the maintenance people, they said that was one of their biggest items that they hoped had been included. And in talking to the architects, we believe at some point in time it was excluded because the shift became to air quality. And I think everybody realized that, just as Brian said, you don't want to fix the ceilings and repair and put new ceilings in only to find out that water pipes leak later. So that's how the numbers got to the point. I think there was some question, why wasn't the guaranteed max done first? Well, there was no way to do that because you have to get in there and make sure all the drawings are complete, all the subcontractors. Now, we got to the 10 million 250. Then there was a small add for the RFIs, and now we've added the water lines. So this should be your guaranteed max short of, you know, you add windows, change doors, or some change order that everybody is in agreement with and would have to be signed off on. So I recognize y'all's confusion, but I promise you, we did it as we were instructed to do from day one. And I know you're not questioning that, but.
Sure, as far as, I mean, again, I want to go back to the board and just make sure everybody understands from finance perspective, we don't care what work's being done and where. We don't care about what's being done, that's not out of our scope. But the issue that we had with this, and I verified this with the comptroller's office because that's who I have to satisfy to keep Giles County compliant, there's a lot of issues. And so we had to backtrack on this. And what we've been told on the guaranteed maximum price is that has to be done, number one, and approved by the governor body, whether it would be a county situation or school board first before work's done. So we haven't done that. And two, making sure adequate funding is in place before. So we've had to backtrack a lot of that, and so that's why we're kind of here, trying to get this situated. And then also, we've learned, now that the guarantee, if this board approves this going forward, finance is out of it. We don't have to be involved anymore in the bids and any of that documents. You guys have full throttle to do whatever you do, and we just pay directly to you, and you handle the subs. But before, before we had this signed contract, we can't do that. We had, if we write you that and you pay the subs, we're in complete violation. So I think there's been a lot of lessons learned. I know we in finance, it's the first time we've dealt with being on our projects, but our first thing is make sure we handle this in compliance issues. We don't have a state on us because we've not done something correctly. And on the path we were on, we were doing it incorrectly.
I don't necessarily agree with that, but I will say, well, we've done it from day one as we were instructed to do, and we bid it as we were instructed to do. I understand, I'm not an accountant, and I'm certainly not going to question the state comptroller's office, but I do know a little about construction. And I'm, but I'm fairly positive that our contract was signed and we bid it as we were supposed to. I don't think the guaranteed max could have been done until then, and I believe that the 10 million 250 was shared with the board and everyone before we started construction.
And I'm not questioning that.
No, I just want to get it, we're in a room where there are a lot of people, I want to make sure it gets that correctly.
Sure. I'm just going by, like I said, because if this had went the way, the direction it was going, and we had an audit issue, it could result in losing funding. So that's my job, is to be the police of the funds. Again, I don't care how, what, when, or where. My job is to keep this board sound fiscally, the same as I'm the county commission. So please don't think I'm being disrespectful to you.
No, no, I don't take it that way at all.
I just want to make sure we, going forward, we know we're on the same page, and we can make sure we move forward and we do it fiscally the way we're supposed to, even if that means we have to both do the stuff out of the norm, but just know that anything that I do is that I'm uncertain, I'm always going to check with the comptroller's office to make sure we're good.
And I think you should, and have no problem with that, and as I've told the board or the representatives of the board, we will do anything that we need to do. If you ever find that we need to back up and do something different, we're happy to do that, and because just like you, we get audited at the end of the year, and we want to make sure that we're not doing anything that would mess up the subcontractors, the material suppliers for the work. So we want to be as transparent, the whole point of cost plus with guaranteed max or at risk is to be as transparent as possible, and that is our main goal. And you feel free to call me if you ever have any questions about anything.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, too, we have a, we have a signed contract. This is, this is a limited signed contract to trigger the average report, and the, and one other reason why, like I said earlier, it wasn't done sooner is because of, we were ready, you could have signed, the other option would have been to sign it at 10-2-5, but you would have had change orders until you got to the number you're at today. And maybe that would have been the better way to go. We just, we all talked about it and thought that getting your contingency right on the bat and everything was just a bad thing when you're still developing the scope and not, don't have, we're getting, still getting direction from the architect as far as what that scope has been doing.
One last thing. So to your point, the contract was signed for the fee and the request, but it's not a complete contract until the guaranteed max is set, and that is an important part of it, and I don't want to disregard that because we, as soon as we have the guaranteed max, we turn around and get the bonds and all those kind of things, and that sort of makes the contract complete. So I understand your point and agree with it.
I'll have to say that I think it's very easy to get where we are over something that started, I believe it was in 2017, and in 2018, we get a new commission, a new school board. Mr. Brewer can probably speak to this better than anyone, because he's been talking school renovations since before 2017. And one thing has kind of, hear him say it, kicked, can get kicked down the road with, in trying to figure this out, many things have been kind of ran down the road as we do. I keep hearing where we're at, how did we get here? And I think it's through the learning curve and undertaking such a massive renovation. One thing that probably just slipped my mind, I just remembered, part of the things that changed the number was to take our current and older HVAC system, include it into the new HVAC system so that maintenance can manage it. You know, there's a lot of taking old, fitting it into new, and as we've done this, and I think as, I know that I have become in trying to work through funding and trying to get blood out of this turnip, as I've heard said before, we want to be amicable to where the funding comes from and how we spend the money and figure out the thing, and I think through the time of trying to set this budget and trying to set a GMP, we kept saying, let's get this accurate, because the funds are there and we know they're there, we are holding on to those funds, but let's get it as accurate as possible so that we don't get into a position and we have our own internal or local audits or public audits that say, wow, y'all missed that mark by quite a lot. And that is where we have done and taken the time, and I think that's why we're here today with a GMP of 11 million 86,502. I do not believe we would have hit a GMP had we done it before.
The domestic water lines you're talking about, they weren't figured in the?
They were never part of the contract documents in the drawings from the architects after we were involved in the project. It came out sometime, I think it might have been in there before, but it was well before we were involved, and so it was never part of the drawings. And when they were actually working in the boiler rooms and they were putting some new equipment in and going to tie back into those water lines, and they couldn't because they were just, they break 15 feet down the line trying to.
Just knowing the history of the water lines in this school, why was that not figured to start with?
That goes back to Wold.
Does it? I mean, I mean, those suckers have been leaking since Moses was a corporal.
Well, that's exactly what you made, that staff told us when we started walking through.
I mean, some of you actually could almost put your bagger through the pipe.
Yeah, I think, I think they've done a lot of, I mean, the maintenance staff, I mean, obviously, I think Giles County's got a great maintenance staff and their people, but I think they, they can, with these workers coming, have tried to get by and band-aid some of them as they go, and also, too, when they try to do a correct fitting, they might have a small leak here and break it 20, 30 feet down the line and become a bigger, so it's easier to do those band-aids to not cause a bigger problem over time. But obviously, as soon as it was, we tried to hook on, and then we had some more walks with the maintenance staff, and it was their main concern. We brought it up, and we had, we set a meeting, I think, the same week, and we all went over it. I think the maintenance staff went to Vicki and Knox, so we all knew about it about right at the same time, and we're active to get it some pricing and what step you want to want to do. And this is basically replacing all the domestic water trunks and all the old portions of the building, some of the new portions of the building are already copped, and it's replacing it all the way to those. And then you have, you do have some places that go down in your walls that are like in concrete walls that, you know, right now are in good shape, but, you know, that's why we added some to the contingency, and obviously, any money to get spent in contingency will be discussed before any funds are moved out of contingency, but we added that to that because if you do break a line or something when you're trying to tie on because of that hole down in those walls, you just don't know, it's hard to see behind those.
Bridgeport would be worse.
I've heard it's in the same, at least the same, if not worse, condition.
Cubs hanging on to the highest.
But in the, you know, going through all this, as far as kind of getting the template off the first one on when the GMP needs to be set, obviously, we're hoping to have all those questions answered prior in this time before next summer, because Bridgeport isn't supposed to start until next summer. And now, right now, it's currently not, not been, not had been bit out, but that was the original plan, was for it to be next summer to start. So we're hoping to get any of the questions that we're finding in the high school, take that over Bridgeport and, you know, ask the same questions.
One point two, any contingency that's not used goes 100% back to the school.
We still would need a motion and a second, and then there's still time for discussion that follows that as well.
Motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes. We accept the GMP addendum. With that, that sets our new budget, as we've discussed, to 11 million 86,502.50 for Giles County High School alone. We cannot commit to a project or commit to a contract unless those funds are in the account from which we're going to work through the totalitarian totality of that scope of work and for that project. So with that being said, and with us agreeing to that addendum, which we'll sign after the meeting, we will need to transfer funds, which is what your budget amendment is sheet in there. Dr. Beer, do you want to add to that?
What to really add? We are looking to move $5 million from our 141 general purpose school budget to 178. And again, that would take care of what is left to be done at Giles County High School and would also give us something to start from to get the bidding stages going on for Bridgeforth Middle School. We do want to proceed on with these projects as much as possible because we know that there is a dire need for these to be done. We're past the point of them being necessary, so this would give us a little bit of a pad, not a lot, but a little bit of a pad to begin maybe getting that that project bid so that we would be able to have all of the contracts and guaranteed maximum prices and stuff in a more timely manner going forward.
And moving these funds from 141 to 178 will go before, if we agree to do so, will go before the county commission on Thursday night, hopefully seeing their approval on that as well as our budget altogether for this next fiscal year.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made. Is there a second to approve moving these funds?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion?
No, I just would like to add on that 5 million, that would take care of the Wold going through Giles County High School, the projected estimate for Plaskett Elementary and Bridgeforth, and also, if I've figured the math correctly, the.
and Bridgeforth, and also, if I figured the math correctly, it would give you directly a little over a million dollars to go towards the Bridgeforth, so it would not, there would be some left over, like I said, if I calculated everything correctly.
So, through those expenditures, it'll leave us a little over a million in 178. And then where does that put us for 141 for that balance?
So, based on the budget, the estimate, when we worked on the budget, I hope this number comes in higher until we kind of close books, I'm not going to 100%, and I'm thinking it's going to be around 4.7.
Is that like July after over collection comes in?
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping, it's going to be around that. Hopefully, it'll be pushing five, but let's say to say 4.7. So, I think you are still relatively in good shape under fund balance.
I think I ask you this every time we talk about fund balance, but our pattern of the last few years has been roughly 2 million in over collection?
Correctly. Of course, not spending 100% of budget lines, all those factor into, the only thing that kind of skews it right now, while I don't have a better grasp, we have a lot of grants that have been put in 141, and we've not expended those, and we got, so that's kind of skewing it right now. When I looked at it, we're like 88% of the budget spent at this point, but a lot of that's grants that we're going to have to roll into next year that kind of skews those numbers. But like I said, 4.7 was what, when we did the budget process and we estimated expenditures and revenues, so I feel like that's still probably going to hold true. Again, you're required by statute to have at least a 3% of your expenditures. I personally would never really suggest your fund balance going below 3.5, you know, with the nature of how much our expenditures are now. So, I think you're well about that going forward with this amendment. I feel comfortable with it if you all are, of course.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. All right, that checks us off in terms of where we are with Jost County High School renovations, both the contract and the funding for that with approval from the county commission. Item C, fiscal year '24 consolidated application approval for the IDEA and the ESEA. This needs our approval, and one thing that came to add this to our special call tonight is if you remember, we are having our board meeting on the 13th, and county commission has their full commission meeting on the 17th. It's not really enough time in between there for us to get on their agenda, waiting for us to make an approval of this, and these are the federal funds, and they just need our approval, and since it goes in as a budget amendment, we want to get it in front of the county commission as soon as possible.
Should I say Beth?
Beth.
Our budget amendments aren't approved by the county commission, you said they're below.
Do we need it on there?
We still need it on here tonight because the form is due for Ms. Jones to upload.
Okay, is that the same for the VPK? Okay, forgive me. Okay, so it's not going there, but we've got to get it because the form's...
It has to be uploaded to the state before July 1, and as well as VPK.
Is that for the VPK as well? Okay.
The decision must be made by July 1.
Strike the timing issue on it in terms of our meetings, but by the state's July 1, which are my notes for the VPK curriculum. Okay? But back to fiscal year '24 consolidated application, it does need our approval to get it in before July 1st. Thank you, Beth. Entertained a motion to approve that funding?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Same here for the VPK curriculum, which Mrs. Sakowitz presented to us. Curriculum's been chosen, we saw the vetting process, we saw the data on it, looks like a solid curriculum. Needs our approval, and the state wants it back by July 1st as well. Again, another one of those pressure, cookie type scenarios where requirements and dates didn't really line up. Entertained a motion to approve?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion?
Do we need to reflect the choice that they made?
Connect for learning, I think that's a good, I think that's a good thing. Let the record reflect that that curriculum is the connect for learning.
We're on the same page on that one.
Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Good. That gets the special call through. Announcements, again, full commission meeting is at 5:00 PM this June, or this Thursday, June 29th, or our board meeting is July 13th. Work session slated for July 20th. Anything else for the board before we adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.